A special meeting with council to order for February 28th. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Secondary?
No, secondary.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Motion carried, thank you. And we have Jill with us tonight. That's the real reason we're all here is to see her, not Dave.
I feel so special.
Anyway, I'm gonna turn it over to her right away because she's got a lot of information first.
I do, I'm not gonna go through everything in detail, but the first schedule I gave you, it's called Supplemental Schedule A, and the page number at the bottom is 21. So these four pages are the last pages of the financial statements, but it compares to the budget as you budget and submit to government. So we go through this one in detail. So the first page is kind of a summary of your revenue and expenditures by segment. So your budget was 2.5 million, and you ended up with 2.6 million. The biggest variance, because everything else was kind of from the province, was revenue from own sources. And on the next page, I'll explain where that comes from. On the expenditure side, we're also gonna go into more detail on that, but overall, I wanted to highlight that you had a $628 deficit for the year. Yeah, so a lot of people are like, oh, a deficit. But the fact that you are plus or like on a $2.6 million budget, $2.5 million budget, you only came in at like $600 off budget is pretty freaking amazing, guys.
Treasure is really good.
Right. So typically, the province will start asking questions if you're plus or minus 5% off of budget. You guys are like 0.0001%, so you're fine. So that's a good news story. The next page, we'll get into some of the details of these numbers. So the revenue from own sources comes from building permits, interest on your bank accounts, community events and rentals, and other. Other is mostly like advertising in your newsletter and a couple miscellaneous stuff. So the biggest variance to budget is you didn't budget to receive any interest on your bank accounts. And you did for your operating account, you earned about $6,400. And on the building permit side, you can never tell what you're gonna get from year to year, depending on development. So you had budgeted for 65, which is consistent, but you ended up with 84. So you had more in building permits. So that was the big variance from budget in your revenue from own sources. So now we'll get into the expenses. So we categorize these into different segments. So general government services is legislative, administrative, financial management, and then other. So the legislative expenses are salaries for you guys and then specific expenses, so professional development and travel and whatnot. So you budgeted for $103,000, ended up with 98. Most of that was, there was a counselor vacancy for a portion of the year. So the salaries for the counselor were under. When I met with Dave and Terry earlier last week, and he said, oh, he said, I was $90, $91 or $89 off of budget for your expenses. On the administrative side, so that's a portion of salaries and wages, the office building, what it takes to actually run the municipal side of the building, other miscellaneous things, and the solicitor. So you had budgeted 242 for that category, you came in at 244. But it's interesting to note that your office building, you had thought you were gonna spend about $109,000, only spent 70. So you saved money on that side, but your solicitor budget was way over budget for reasons that you're all aware of. Financial management and common services, salaries and wages, the external audit are fees, civic relations, regional and collaborative services, and the cost of assessment. So you had budgeted 197, came in at 211. There's not a lot of big variances. Civic relations, the biggest one in there is I think you just, you spent more than what you had planned because of like COVID activities and whatnot in there. The other general administrative expenses are your insurance, different grants to organizations, which we broke out into three separate grants last year because they were quite large, and then other expenses. And in the other expenses, you had budgeted around $79,000, came in at 97. It's interesting to note that the expenses that you could control in that category were right on budget. You were at about $78,000 and change. But every year, the province sends out through Morneau Chappelle, which is called LifeWorks now, a pension adjustment based on the liability or asset of the pension plan for the municipal employees. So that caused an adjustment of $17,000. So everything that in that category, that other expenses that you could control, was within budget, but that was just the pension expense that you can't really control. So it was a $17,000 addition that I had to do. The next page is protective services, so your fire and your emergency measures. So you had budgeted 606 in fire, and you ended up with 620. The biggest difference in that was some ladder truck extras that you had not budgeted. Everything, you thought everything had been spent last year and it carried over into this year. And then EMO, you made up for that by saving some money with EMO. Transportation services, street lighting signs, other transportation, was under budget, mostly due to that other transportation item. So the year before was your big study on streets and roads and all that stuff. And this year, I think you had planned to spend a little bit more on that study, but it didn't come to fruition, so that's why there was only $455 spent in other. Environmental health, this is your garbage collection and recycling. So that came in pretty much equal to budget. Your solid waste disposal, that's your tipping fees. So you had thought you were gonna spend around $135, came in at $117. Those are really hard to predict because it depends on the size of the loads of the garbage fees and all that stuff. Environmental development services, so planning, is what you pay to the Regional Service Commission. Research and planning studies, economic development, beautification, and other community development. So you had thought you'd spend 205, and you spent 171. Recreation and culture services, so your sport and recreation fees, the counter fees that you pay to the city. Community center, the expenses of the community center. Salaries and wages, so that's recreation salaries and community center salaries. Parks and playgrounds, other recreation, and a contribution to other government. So the salaries and wages are way under budget because you did have an amount in there for recreation director, which I know that you're trying to hire now. So that's why you were under budget on that side. And the contributions, but you kind of made up for that by giving a contribution to the aquatic pool study, which is that $54,000. And the last page on this schedule is fiscal services. So your debt charges, your interest on your long-term debt, and your principal portion of the mortgages, and your bank service charges came in almost exactly at budget. And then the transfer to own funds. So you had thought you were gonna spend $40,000. And what happens is I go in and I look at all the categories, like community center and parks and playgrounds, and I pull anything of a capital nature. So anything that's over $2,500, that has a lifespan of more than a year, I pull it out of that expense category and put it into here, capital expenditures. So you had planned to spend $40,000, and out of your own funds, you end up paying $140,000. In addition to that, you have the general capital reserve fund. So at the end of the year, you did a reserve fund transfer of $50,000, and that's where that shows up. Alright, so now the next package I'm gonna go through is the consolidated financial statements. And this is under public sector accounting standards, which is a fancy way that all government entities have to present their statements. So we're gonna see a little bit of a difference in the income statement from what we just went through, because we have to add in amortization expenses. And it's a consolidated statement, so it also brings in your gas tax funding. It brings in the interest on the other bank accounts, all your reserve accounts, those kinds of things. So you're gonna notice a little bit different number in your surplus when we get there. So the first thing that I need to read into record is the opinion of the independent auditor's report, which is the first paragraph on page one, or the first two paragraphs on page one. So we have audited the accompanying consolidated financial statements of the rural community of Hanwell, which comprises of the consolidated statement of financial position as of December 31st, and the consolidated statements of change in net debt, operations and accumulated surplus, and cash flows for the year then ended. And also notes to the consolidated financial statements, including a summary of significant accounting policies. So that's what we did. "In our opinion, the consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the rural community as of December 31st, 2022, and its results of operations and cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with Canadian Public Sector Accounting Standards." All that to say is it was a clean audit. We didn't find any indications of fraud. There weren't any errors that couldn't be corrected. It was good. All the questions that my staff and I asked, Terry and Cheryl had answers for. You could produce all the documents we were looking for, which is always an auditor's dream when you come in and start looking at things. Alright, so the first page with numbers on it, which is page three, is a snapshot in time at December 31st. So it's in the for-profit world, it's a balance sheet. In PSAB world, it's a consolidated statement of financial position. So as of December 31st, you had cash in the bank of $1.9 million. You had receivables from general public, federal government and its agencies, which is your HST, the province of New Brunswick, which is your building permits, and then your pension asset. So your receivables are at a little over $2 million. And then your liability is what you owe. Your payables and accruals were consistent at around $30,000 for the year. Deferred revenue, which is the gas tax funding you haven't yet spent, so you've received it, but you haven't spent it yet, is 1.1 million. Accurate sick leave obligation is 55,000. So your staff is really healthy and they don't take their sick time. But it's in your policy that you can carry your sick time over until you use it, i.e. you get sick, or you retire, or you leave. And it doesn't get paid out on retirement, it doesn't get paid out if they quit, but it gets carried each year from year to year. So, and then your long-term debt, you're about $2 million in mortgages on buildings and whatnot. So total liabilities is 3.2 million. And so that makes your net debt of 1.2 million. And that will get better as you pay down the mortgage. Non-financial assets, so tangible capital assets is money that you've invested in property, equipment, land, those kinds of things. So you've invested over time the 6.9 million. And we've expensed through amortization about $925,000. So you end up with about 5.9, almost $6 million in cost base of your assets. And then prepaid expenses are about $31,000. That's insurance that you pay in the summer. A portion of that, we defer till next year and gets expensed next year. Your consolidated statement of change in net debt, so you have an annual surplus under PSAB of $691,000. With that surplus, you invested $865,000 in capital assets, and we expensed $262,000. The change in prepaid, and then that overall is an increase in your net assets of $87,000. And so your net debt at the beginning of the year was 1.2 million, 1.294, and at the end of the year is 1.206. The next page is your consolidated statement of operations. And this is under, again, public sector accounting standards. So you budgeted for 2.5 million, and you ended up with 3.295 million. And the difference mainly, like I said, is the gas tax contributions are 400,000, and other government transfers are 290. So those other government transfers are things like the accessibility grant, which are of a capital nature, right? So that wasn't shown on the previous statement, but it has to come into income on a consolidated basis. And then the expenditures are all pretty much the same, except for there's amortization expenses in there. So your accumulated surplus at the end of the year is 4.8 million. The next page is your statement of cash flow. I'm not gonna go through every number, but this is essentially how the cash was brought in and how the cash went out. And then it's represented by, so that section at the bottom, that $1.9 million on the balance sheet. So you had $63,000 in your general operating fund, and then you had restricted cash. So your general capital fund had a little over $1 million. So that's your gas tax fund. And the capital reserve had $655,000, and the operating reserve had $116,000. So the next couple of pages are the significant accounting policies, which are a bunch of accounting gollybouts that tells the world how we get to those numbers. I'm not gonna go through them in any great detail. Note number six on page 10 outlines that pension asset that I talked about and that $17,000 adjustment I had to do. These words come right from the actuary from Morneau Chappelle or LifeWorks. Note number seven on page 11 is your deferred revenue. So you have two streams of deferred revenue. One is your gas tax fund, and the other is like damaged deposits on hall rentals and things like that. So your gas tax fund, you started the year at 1.195 million. You received 351,000 throughout the year, and you spent 400,000. So that's the 1.1 that's left to be spent out of the gas tax funds. Remind me, Terry, are you in year three or year four? Did you just finish of your gas tax fund?
The third.
You just finished the third?
It goes to 2025.
Yeah. So you're gonna receive another probably 350,000, which means that by 20, or another 700,000 over the next two years, which means you have close to $2 million left to spend on those projects. Note number 12, or page 12, note number eight, talks about the current sick leave obligation. Note number nine is your long-term debt. So you have two debentures with municipal borrowing board, one on the fire station and one on this building. Your short-term borrowing compliance note, note number 10, just outlines that you are within your borrowing limits for the province. So that just discloses to the province that you guys are good. And the other couple notes are just information pieces. So then we get into some more schedules. Page 14, it has the tangible capital asset schedule. So the total column that's bolded is what flows up into the statement of financial position. But with that, we break it out a little bit more. So land, buildings, machinery, equipment, parks and playgrounds, and motor vehicles. So your biggest assets are buildings. You've got about $4.3 million invested in buildings. And then the second biggest is parks, playgrounds. And that also includes any vacant land that the rural community owns at 1.1. The next page is the segment disclosure. So it's just a note for the province that they want to see the revenues and expenses split out over segment based on the budget. So essentially, it's just us allocating the property tax warrant and other government transfers to specific segments. There's no real new numbers in there. It just is more of a breakout that flows into the income statement. Note number 15 is your reconciliation of annual surplus. So the first column is the general operating fund. So that's essentially, we start with the surplus under PSAB, which is the top right number, that's 691,000. And this tells the province how we get to that bottom left number, which is the $628 deficit, which is the one they're really concerned with, whether or not you have a good operating, general operating fund handle on things. And then the last one I'm gonna go over in any detail is page 17, which is the statement of reserves. So your general operating reserve and your general capital reserve have assets in them, a cash, a money market fund. So your accumulated surplus at the beginning of the year, and then we take in a surplus or deficit for the year to get to the accumulated surplus at the end of the year. And then the revenue and expenditures just show the activity in these funds. So in the general operating reserve, the only activity was you earned some interest on the bank account. In the general capital reserve, you put in 50,000 from your general operating fund, and you earned $8,822 in interest. And then there was a motion to transfer out of the general capital reserve fund into the general capital fund for the purchase of, to offset the solar array. And then we have to outline what the motions are, and then Terry ends up having to sign off on the statement and seal it with her municipal seal when we send it to the province. And that's pretty much it. The rest of it is, the rest of the statement is just more detailed that we went over on the first one presented a little differently for the province's purposes. Alright, I'm gonna pause there before I go into the audit flatter, Dave. If you wanna make the motion in that question moment.
Okay, can I get a motion for approval, please? And we can second that then in question.
Okay, move to approve the consolidated financial statements as presented by Jill Stare from December 31st.
Okay, any questions for Jill, which is here, council? Questions, concerns, comments?
I just throw along the numbers, actually.
Looks good. The cabinet's straightforward stuff, and it's probably overwhelming for the new people, I imagine, but just the numbers just keep changing slightly every year for us, really.
Yeah, and the more mature of an organization you get to be, the more you really plan for budgeting, and you really understand how the process works. And then you monitor it throughout the year so that at the end of the year, there aren't any big surprises, right? I think the last couple of years, the biggest variance to budget was around this building, the operating costs of the building. You know, you would budget high, and it would come in low. Or you would budget low, and it would come in high. But I think you've got a pretty good handle on that now. You've been in here long enough. But yeah, there was nothing surprising to me that came through. So hopefully, there was nothing surprising to you either.
The only thing that after our meeting, I think, council that we need to do for like September, October, when we're doing next year's budget, any time that takes like the maintenance that we did in the trails, we put that under parks and recreation, where we need to put it under that capital.
The capital expenditures.
Expenditures. So that's kind of the things I've learned from this meeting. We'll just keep note of that, so. I already got it written in my agenda for September.
Exactly. When you're planning your budget, you're planning for those capital expenditures, whereas in the parks and playgrounds should just be operating.
Yes.
So the cost of operating programs or recreation facilities or things like that, or the cost of maintenance to do small repairs and whatnot. That's what should be in that line item. The actual big purchases, if you're gonna do another trail or something like that, should go down in capital.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm new.
Yes.
The gas tax projects were already planned when it was applied for over a five-year period?
They were, and that is something that we'll be having a meeting on soon because I have to be sending in for the end of April. Our new, like, we can adjust them every year, so that report has to go in. So we'll get together and we'll figure out if we want to still do that project, if we want to add, because there are a couple of projects that we ended up taking, say, from surplus or whatever, so that we didn't have to use those funds. So now we can transfer those funds over to other projects. So that is something that we'll be meeting. We'll have a finance meeting probably in April or something, and we'll do them.
The gas tax projects are the same for municipalities. There's very restrictive use on them. So for those of you that don't have water and sewer projects, which are most of the smaller ones, you're kind of limited on what you can spend. It has to be on recreation and infrastructure. The, I have heard rumblings from local government in the last couple of months that they perhaps are gonna extend the descriptions of what you can spend on your gas tax funding. And a lot of communities are excited about that because they might open it up to health. So, you know, community health centers and things like that, as well as more green initiatives. So if you were gonna do another solar array or something like that, you could put it through gas tax because it would be a green project. So using up some of the carbon tax piece of the gas tax fund. So I have, but I don't know if that's gonna be for the current projects or if they're setting that up for the next five years. But it is kind of, it is being talked about, I guess, around the cabinet.
That would be really good, because we are quite limited.
Yeah. I know, I was at the upper membership council meeting last night, and they were having exactly the same discussion. There's only so much you can do in parks and playgrounds.
That's right, yeah. Parks and playgrounds do get really neat. Well, in our case, it's not bad for us yet because we're, we've got all these new areas.
Correct.
And things like that, where we do some of that stuff. But like you say, eventually, you'd like, there's other things you'd like to do.
Yeah.
That limited, what are you gonna do?
It was really great for us, yeah, because, I mean, we started with nothing.
With nothing, there were no community spaces.
No, like, my favorite saying was, we don't even have a park bench. Right, so the gas tax one was great.
You built all of your.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Yes, good point.
You mentioned that we'll get better as we pay down the mortgage. So could you explain about the mortgage?
Yeah, so you, right now, on the statement of financial position, you're in a net debt position, which means that you have more debt than you have assets. And that's common when you build, when you're, when you're building, right? You go into debt. So as you pay your mortgage down, your debt will go down, and your assets will go up. So you'll go into a net asset position. So that's why you'll get better as you pay it down. Municipal capital borrowing board only gives money to municipalities for good debt, they call it, essentially buildings and major equipment. So if you were to buy a fire truck or something, you could go to the municipal borrowing board and ask for them to fund that rather than go to a bank, because it's usually more favorable interest rates, too. So yeah, that was, that was my comment on it will get better as the mortgage is paid down. You'll get out of debt and more into a net asset position.
And the mortgages on this building and the.
And the fire hall, yeah.
Do you know, or we know, anything about the assets coming to us from the annexed areas?
So I was just gonna say, we'll see a huge difference next year on this because our assets are going to be substantial between our buildings and all the fire trucks and.
As far as we know, there's no debt on them from the capital.
No, it's from the capital borrowing board. We have one fire truck that they are going to keep until the loan is paid off. So I just signed a lease with RBC as a sublease. Just because if we stopped it, the interest rates are a lot higher. So the province will keep that. It's paid for in December the 1st of 2024, I believe it was. So they'll just keep it for the next year or so. And then it'll be ours, and they'll turn it, turn it over.
And there wouldn't be any debt on Station 3 or Station 1?
Nope, everything, there's, everything is paid for. Paid for. So we're very fortunate that way. So our assets on here will be substantial next year.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in the favor, if accepted in the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary minded? Great, motion carried, thank you, council. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you. Alright, the other thing I wanted to go through is the audit findings flatter. So you all have a copy of that, too. For those of you who were here last year, it's literally unchanged, except for the dates. So the words, the letter. Yes.
Do I have three copies of it?
Oh, you have three copies.
Just wanted to make sure to have one.
Exactly. So basically, we communicate as auditors to you the audit status. So we've completed it, and after tonight, it'll be finalized, it's been signed. The significant risks of the organization are essentially that you have a segregation of duties. You don't have enough staff to have one person do a bank deposit, one person do the bookkeeping, and a different person, you know, receiving the money at the front desk. It's just not gonna happen in organizations your size. So that's, that's the only real significant risk to the audit. So you make sure you have two signing authorities and all that kind of stuff to kind of mitigate it. General controls relating to IT. So I had mentioned this last year, and there wasn't really a lot of movement on it, but there was, there is a lack of documentation surrounding your IT risk assessment. You know, the fact that things are on the cloud or on the server or here, what's your policies? And Brenner probably helped you design that. But it is a focus of audits now to look at the IT controls because that's, you know, cybersecurity is a big threat, and that could damage the municipality quite substantially if you were to get a phishing scheme or somebody accessed your bank account, or you've got $1.9 million in there. If somebody could get into your systems and then get into your bank account, they could drain it pretty quick, so.
They do have insurance now.
Yeah, cyber insurance will not cover you if you don't have IT risk assessment. Yeah, cyber insurance will not cover you if you don't have IT risk assessments and policies in place, they'll deny coverage.
Oh.
Actually, though, we may have something. I'll send you something because.
Yeah, and then we can take this up next year.
Yeah, because Brenner did do a lot of stuff because they had to provide it to our insurance company as proof that we, they are following.
Yeah.
Stuff, so that may be something that.
And it might be something that you want to bring to counsel to a risk assessment of here's where our hot point areas are, if they're low, medium, or high risk, and what's the likelihood of it happening.
I see interesting news today on the feds have restricted their employees that have, you know, their government equipment, they don't want them to have TikTok, for instance, on their computers.
Yeah.
You see that filtering down to the provincial government and the non-commissional government?
It's already in the provincial government.
It is already?
Yeah, they have really, really strict controls. So for instance, I have personal tax clients that I can't send password-protected PDFs to, to their work email because it won't allow attachments through. You have to use a file share program that's password-protected. So yeah, the province has those in place already, I would almost say that the province is ahead of the federal government, the New Brunswick provincial government when it comes to IT controls, but some smart cookies work in the IT department in the province.
Yeah, yeah, well, New Brunswick was, you know, for years on the cutting edge of technology, right? For small problems like ourselves.
Yeah. There were no significant difficulties encountered in the audit, the comments on accounting practices, so the policies, there were no significant changes. The accounting for sick leave accruals, so item number three on page three, it was a couple of years ago, the province looked at the way that we presented the sick leave accrual and they said you should do it this way, and we disagreed, and so counsel at the time agreed with us that we should disagree. So as per employment contracts review, the sick days, the sick days are accumulated but not vested, which means you can't take them with them, with you when you go, and specifically, since section 3255 of the public sector accounting standards require that an actuarial valuation occur, but only if the benefits are vested, and your benefits are not vested, so we don't have to do that. So we just communicate that to you each year in case the province does question, and again, you have the ammunition in this letter to say, no, this is why we do it this way.
So Jill, in my previous employment, hours were vested, so when.
When you retired.
When I left and came here, they were paid out to me, I had to put them into RSP or whatever. If that is something that we ended up discussing and counsel agreed with as a retirement benefit.
So there's a difference, there's a difference between a service award and sick leave vesting. So there are several municipalities that have long-term service awards, so event, after you've been with the place for five years, then you accrue five days a year or something as a retiring allowance, and those are different kinds of benefits than taking your sick time with you when you go.
Okay.
So there's two different things there.
So if we're allowed to take our days, if counsel approved that, do we start as day one when they approve that and move forward, or?
You would have to determine that.
Okay, yeah.
But there are, most municipalities have long-term service awards built into, so for those, those employees that stay for a long time, you get rewarded for that essentially. So it usually starts in year five, so, and then you get however many days a year for every year of service after that, and it caps at, you know, 40 days or 80 days or whatever council wants it to cap at, but that's so that when a long-term employee retires, they get a little bonus, a little retiring allowance at the end, based on days of service or years of service.
Sounds like a very good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the province, you got to watch.
Well, the province actually reversed theirs, they don't do it anymore.
Not into watch.
Not even watch.
Why doesn't that surprise me?
Yeah.
But in this day of, in age of workforce labor shortages and stuff, I think anything that you can do to attract and keep staff is definitely a benefit.
Absolutely.
Especially because there's an awful lot of local entities out there now, there's more competition than there used to be.
Oh, I know, I got that description with someone yesterday.
Accounting estimates, we, we use estimates on the amortization or the useful life of your assets, accrued liabilities and deferred revenue. There were no significant financial dis, financial statement disclosures, uncorrected misstatements, there weren't any, and there's no, there's just the significant deficiency internal control that we talked about was the segregation of duties. The other audit matters of governance interest, I kept this whole section in here as the same as last year, just because I knew you had new council members, and it's kind of interesting information, a lot of what is in here, you would have gone over in your training, but it's, it's like links to useful information, but it's, it's municipal council should operate in a policy governance instead of an operational rule, and so we identified that over the years as a, as a new entity. That started out, council was very operational, now as you're maturing, you're going into more policy and governance, and it's a learning curve and it's some growing pains to get there, but I think that you're going to get there, so I just highlight governance issues in the audit findings letter as well. And that's it?
Motion for recesses?
Did you? Oh, the separate question? I don't think there was a motion or nothing.
I don't think so, it's just an FYI, yeah. I don't think we've received it in the past.
Thank you for coming in on a cold winter evening.
Exactly. It's all good. I have a bunch of documents for you and Terry to sign, did you want me to stick around? We can do it after.
Well, we can take, well, five minutes recess and do it right now, so you don't have to wait around and. So let's just do a, a gurner for five minutes. Welcome, Keith, from the Capital Region Service Commission, appreciate you showing up tonight, we're anxiously awaiting, you already have to say, so I'll give you the floor.
Okay, I guess from talking to Terry, council is looking at doing a storage building with a warming shed on the side.
That's correct, yeah.
So I guess, we've been seeing that, there are a few things that I think council should consider when they're going, the building code requires certain things when it's, the warming center part is an assembly use, where the public going to be in there, so that means that we have to separate that away from your, your storage units, the storage area, so five separations, so keep in mind, that's, that's going to be, there's a cost to that. The garage part, the original one that I saw was with the mezzanine on top, going up in height costs money, too, so I understand how you're going down to a single level.
Yeah.
If you're at single level, then it's, it's simpler, the cost for that should come down some, but it's still, you know, depending on how high you want to go with it, what you're going to store in there, if you're getting into 16-foot walls, you need design for it anyway because of the assembly use.
The estimate that they gave us, I'm not sure if I can interject here for a minute, if I may, it was over $100,000 cheaper to knock that level off, and that included a 12-foot door.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and that's, I couldn't understand that, that's, because then you're in a fire separation on the, on the mezzanine. The second level storage, if, if you need it, that's, I mean, that's fine, but someone's got to walk up the stairs to store stuff, that's, that's never, that's not, never, never makes anyone happy to walk down the stairs, so if you, if you are able to make it bigger to make up for the room, it's probably just as cheap to do it that way. So are there any questions for me about, because I, and some of the things that I was talking about with Terry, like the roof, you know, when you're putting overhead doors on, you want to think of where the snow is going to end up, if you put a metal roof on, maybe put a shed roof on so it goes away from the door, so there's, you don't have that, I see too many houses and too many buildings, they don't think about that and have the snow fall off the roof in front of their overhead doors, then they have to shovel it every time they want to let it out.
So by shed roof, you mean like a lean-to?
Like, like, just a, basically a pitched roof in one direction, and usually away from the overhead doors. The warming area, you're probably not going to put water in there, so you can turn the heat on and off, that's something to think about, if you, if you have no water supply in there, you can turn the heat off when you don't need it.
Yeah.
If you're going to, if you're going to have like a water supply, like a sink or something in there, you're going to heat it all winter, that's just a thought to think about.
That's a good idea, actually.
Yeah, you don't want the water to freeze, so.
Yeah, even with, it was mentioned here, the heat pump, I think that with the temperatures you get sometimes, even a heat pump wouldn't cut it, probably, even if it was like an 18.
Yeah, and if it's something you're only going to turn on once in a while, a unit heater and thermostat, and then shut it off and you're done.
Yeah.
That's, you know, there's nothing wrong with that, that's a, you know, do, put some, put some insulation in there to keep it warm, and, you know, if you're only going to heat it for a few hours a day, it's, the heat pump has to really, really run all the time to make it efficient.
The other thing that makes sense to me, too, that was in your description here, was that I didn't think about when, because I, this is kind of my project, I took the lead on it, and just did some rough sketches and stuff like that in the various, I never thought about the windows being a risk to theft, so that was a good call, yeah, it doesn't really make sense to have windows in a storage building, but it would for the warming area.
For the warming area, now, some, some places, they, they do put the, some glass in the overhead doors, but they put it up high, so that way in the daytime you get a bit of light in, but it sort of keeps people from peeking in at night to see what's, what you have.
Another thing, too, that is important, I know, it's kind of cut off here in the sheet, the electrical, it makes a big difference, too, so we want to make sure we have all the electrical arms going forward right from day one, because it's a lot more expensive to have to backport that stuff in.
To go back.
So like 620s, all 620s, all receptacles having dual 15, 20, stuff like that, right?
Yeah.
That would, it makes a big difference doing it out, and it's much cheaper to do that when there's all the, right?
Yeah. The other part you might want to think about is when you decide exactly what you want, when you're, because of the assembly use, you need a design, so that's, it's not an option for it, it has to be designed by an architect or engineer, so when you have him do his design or her design, that will give you all the documents he needs really to append it to get, you know, a fixed price on what you're, what you're doing.
So that would be the next step, basically, is to basically give rough plans to an architect?
Yeah.
Get a request for photo for several people, let's see, take the bid for which one, and then they'll come back with something much more specific.
Exactly.
And now go to tender.
And then go to tender, and that, and what, what they're doing for your tender, we, that, that should be something that we can use for a building permit, too. So that gives you, you know, all things that you need. I don't think there was anything, unless it was something else that anyone was.
I'm new, so I'm assuming that the description on the last page is what we're talking about? The project description, panel, world community will construct a storage facility stored behind the rec.
I think that's taken from the gas tax.
From the gas tax, this was just to show you the, the gas tax contribution. That they're willing to do 15,000, but this is kind of what it was, is the storage building out here. So it would be standalone? Yep. Okay. Like I, I don't think I knew anything about it.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, that wouldn't surprise us, I think.
Yes.
It was in our capital plan, but yeah, fire capital plan, I think it was, so some of it, just I'll bring people up to speed a little more, so the warming shed part of it can be paid for with gas tax funding, the rest of it would either need to go to capital borrowing or capital reserves or budget, right, I believe, and.
Exterior, have we talked about the exterior yet?
Not yet.
We're going to. The word shed and metal siding do not go together in my world, so.
And that really shouldn't say shed, I.
Storage building. I know, and despite the issues that we've had with the paint and stuff like that here, like, it would be nice to have something that somewhat matched the design or current architecture, is there something we would take up with the architect?
Yeah, exactly, and that's, that's a, that's a cost issue, metal siding works for the building code.
Oh, that's hard for me either, no.
Be careful when you're, when you choose your siding, and the architect should, should be understanding of this, too, depending on how close you are to this building, you may have to go to a non-combustible construction, a non-combustible siding, so it may not be a wood siding, it may, it may be something like a hardwood, like a cement board or something like that, so you may not, you don't have the option to pick anything you want possibly, depending on, the farther you can get it away, that gives you more options to choose.
That is good to know, though.
Cement board, my experience, but that doesn't work good in this climate.
There are, there are positives in it, the steel, I mean, and I won't say that steel is the solution, because as soon as your kid throws a rock against it, it looks awful. Wood siding, it's a maintenance issue, if you're asking for one that's perfect.
Oh, there's no such thing as perfect, I tell, we can have a, inspired by nature.
Yeah, exactly.
So it'd be same electrical meter, right, to be conduit to this building?
Yeah, if, if there's enough power here to supply, because I don't imagine there's a lot of power required over there.
Probably not, just be for like pumps and stuff like that, depending on what's.
Yeah, so when the architect has it, he can check and see how much you're going to need, and then if he can bring it out of here, that's probably the most, you know, efficient way to do it.
Because that way you have a facing roof, you have potential for more solar panels on it.
Well, that would be the way to go, I don't think, for sure, absolutely.
Maybe that's something we put into the design?
I would, I would think we should.
Build a, in from the capco?
Yeah, no, why would you not?
And get a grant.
There you go.
Potentially, because that wouldn't be double dipping, right, because the gas tax and the warming should hurt.
Yeah, no, I mean, we absolutely should, break the start.
Ask the architect?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is something, if you're, if you're getting ready for, for the solar, he can do put that in his design, and then when you, if you don't put the solar on five years down the road, well, you have the design that's ready for solar, you know, right? I think in this building, you had to go back to the architect to ensure that it was okay for the, for the solar panels, up front with this.
Cool. I would have more questions, thanks for asking.
Yeah, any other questions for Keith, what is here?
I suppose you leave them, I'm lost.
If there's any, any questions, we deal with the building front every day, so, and anything that comes up.
Does have an email.
You don't have to, you don't have to call me to a meeting, you can call me on the phone or anything, not at all.
It's nice having the direct questions, though, so.
Well, it's, it's sort of, we, we see these buildings being built, and sometimes there's good ideas you see, and sometimes there's bad ideas you see, so.
No, it's great to have here, it's like I said, things you don't necessarily think about, I never thought about the distance between the buildings as far as.
I'll reiterate height, pick the height you need, but the higher you go, it gets, it starts to get expensive, over 16 feet is really expensive, because you can't even do with natural lumber, you're into engineered wood, so, you know, if you, if you need a 20-foot-high interior, that's fine, but if you, if you don't need it, you know, stick with something pretty standard.
We just needed, I think the plan was originally to have two doors, one really kind of wide, about an eight-foot standard height, and one a little bit narrower, probably 10 feet, but a minimum of 10 feet, because we needed something that'd attract it while carrying something.
Yeah.
Could clear the door to basically unload it if we needed to store something that was heavy, we didn't want to expose the weather and stuff.
But that still is pretty standard, can you, I mean, you see a lot of.
Yeah, go ahead, no, 10, 10 and 12-foot doors are fine, and then, you know, a 14 or 16-foot walls, those are pretty standard, so. It's when you get over 16 that you're, you may get into a situation where, okay, it's really going to start to skyrocket in your cost.
That makes sense.
But there's no point building a building that's too short starting out if you.
Yes, it can't get tracked really, just.
Can't fit through the door with it.
And overhead doors have become very expensive in the last little while.
Really?
Overhead doors have been crazy.
Wow.
A $2,000 door five or six years ago, the $10,000 door today. It's, they've really gone up.
Interesting.
That's good to know, yeah.
I didn't know that either.
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're expensive, nothing's cheap anymore.
You come back right.
True.
True. I'm trying to think, I've got my head afoot, maybe not, so this is.
Keith, you may have mentioned this, uh, you and I were talking and we were saying that with the warming, sort of, we would probably have to have that barrier for.
Yeah, fire separation.
The fire separation, did you already mention that?
Yeah, 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 that's just it, that's just basically a thicker wall, is it?
Well, it's, it's, it's fire-rated, so you can do it with gyp rock.
Okay.
Insulation.
Yeah, and, and depending on how much, how much equipment you're gonna keep in the other side, if it's just, you know, a couple overhead doors and a bit of equipment, it's, it's likely not gonna be. If you had, if you were saying you're, you're gonna keep like eight or nine vehicles in there.
Right.
It's gonna get, it's gonna get bigger.
Right.
For smaller, smaller things like that, you're, you're.
A lot of times it's just double, double gyp rock.
Yeah, five-eighths gyp rock instead of a half-inch gyp rock.
Right.
So it's not, that's not the end of the world, it's just, it's just something you have to be careful of when you're doing it, and that's what we do when we come up, do our inspections to, to watch for that.
And would be insulated that side too anyway, cause the heat is paid all the way around for the warming side, right?
Yeah, you'll, even if you don't, even if you don't want to do the, the.
Heat on the inside.
The other side, then yeah, you're warming that you want, it's like that.
Okay. Anything else, Keith? All right. Thank you, Keith, appreciate you coming in.
No, overall, and, uh, and good luck with your new building.
Thank you.
I'm sure you'll be able to see it, certainly.
Yeah.
We get to see them all.
You don't know any good architects.
But aren't busy, it's hard to find.
I know, we'll just knock behind you.
Okay, I'll make sure I post this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Keith.
Okay. So moving on, item five is vacation requests by council. So we had a vacation, oh, the, oh, what it passes over here, I know we had a, a vacation request from, uh, councillor Septon, and like I told him, we, we weren't sure on vacation whether it was a valid excuse or not. But he does, and everybody, every, uh, councillor has up to twenty percent before you, you basically got, you can miss two meetings out of the, out of the twelve without a valid excuse and without being, without it being a problem for your attendance record. But if you miss three without a valid excuse, then it's, you're looking at having some, some of your, uh, money clawed back. So I think we're, we're looking at the new remuneration policy anyway, this is one of the things that would come up. So it's one of the things we're just having a look at before, to see where it's gonna go with, is are we going to, uh, put valid excuses, examples of valid excuses in? Are we gonna outright and say that vacation is not a valid excuse? Cause I mean, you know, you know where your meetings are, you know when you have meetings, and you know, you can schedule a vacation around that. But again, like I said, you've always got two to fall back on, that you missed two meetings in the year and, and not be penalized for it. So, did you have anything you want to say on that?
No, I was just going to say that, um, this report is kind of a twofold, so one, we need to say if we agree that councillor Septon's vacation for next month, um, and then he's actually absent this evening as well. Are valid excuses, and two, if you want to list, say sickness, death in family, employment commitments, personal or family emergencies and vacations in our procedural bylaw because, or, remuneration. Bylaw, because as we are mending them, we'll bring those forward for the next meeting, we'll make those changes. So I've put, um, two motions down on here, and you can decide, like, if you, if you want to accept the, um, oh, sorry, this vacation request, then there's that motion. Or if you don't want to and you don't feel that vacation should be listed in our remuneration bylaw, I've also given you that as well, so. We just kind of need to know more or less so that we know what to change in our remuneration bylaw.
Well, I don't know why we're dealing with both of these at the same time. First of all, I don't really understand why we're dealing with it at all right now, cause as I said, he has lots of time to take off anyway, so I don't see the point.
The point would be though, if he, if these were not considered valid excuses, just when he comes up with a third one, then if he says, well, I already had a valid excuse on the last two, so, you know, you can't, you know, you can't really, it's only, that would only be his first one missing. So it is kind of important, where he's already missed two.
And it's not only him.
Well, missing two.
We're all, we're all in the same boat.
Yeah, this is for everyone.
So you're saying missing two, we've never, ever done it for special meetings, it's only ever been for council meetings.
Yeah, in the remuneration bylaw, it actually is a council, regular meetings.
Right, it has never been for special meetings.
Right, so just regular meetings of council. Like I said, you, you, you can miss two without any, uh, clawback, two should be, you know, really plenty for anybody.
You mean you can miss two council meetings?
Regular meetings of council without a valid excuse and it doesn't affect your remuneration in it. That's what our bylaws says.
Right.
Yeah, but if you miss more than twenty percent, which in this case would be more than two, like we had before with, uh, with, uh, one of the former members of council missed more than twenty percent. And, you know, council voted to claw, claw it back because it wasn't a valid excuse, and, uh, that's, that's where the story began.
Yeah, you know, there's two of them in here, that, employment commitments, that was the problem before.
Yeah.
Um, there's a difference between employment commitments and emergency employment commitments, like.
Oh, for sure, like, if, you know, if somebody.
This is why I have a problem with any of this being so specific.
Yeah, me too, I don't think we should be calling it out.
I don't think we should either.
It's, it's basically on a, as needed basis for review. If we call things specifically out, you're gonna miss something always, or your, or the ways, like ways written here, I agree, it's, that's not, employment commitment, your full-time job doesn't necessarily mean that it's a commitment that you can always miss. Like say, what if, what if I have something in my full-time job that now puts me on Wednesday meetings for full-time work? Does that mean I have, I'm literally able to miss every council meeting because it's otherwise?
No, these were, these were just suggestions, I mean, that's, that's just some ideas to get out there, to get.
But, but, it's the arm going, or what we're going with this, right? If we put down something specific, then it's, it's too specific.
Well, once you put specifics in, then you're gonna have stuff that's not covered.
That's right.
Well, this is, I think.
Should we be suspending the rules to have this?
Actually, you know what, I'll just gonna make a motion first, I, I will move that, like, vacations are not a valid excuse and should not be included in the list of valid excuses in the remuneration bylaw amendments.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay. Cause point of order, by the way, I just decided valid.
Very, very good point of order, no doubt. So I'm gonna, uh, we've got a motion on the floor, we got a sector, I'll start with discussions, I'm gonna start with councillor Fox.
So, thank you. Thank you, your worship. I've been sitting there a long time. Thank you, your worship. Um, I'm, I, I, I don't know where to go with this. Um, I think, I think in this particular case with councillor Septon, there was an issue where the airline kind of caused the problem for him. Um, and I don't think that he should be penalized, um, because of that. It's, it's one of those situations, and this is why I feel as though these are kind of, we should be reviewing these one at a time as they come up. Um, because there may be a valid excuse, it may be one of those once-in-a-lifetime vacations where this is like, you know, you've been coming to all the meetings, there's a, there's a reason why you, why you, why you need to go. Or in this case, you know, you had planned a vacation around your, around these days, and then that got moved on you, really, and you couldn't do much about it. So I think we should look at these individually, I think, I think vacation shouldn't be normally a, an excuse to miss a meeting, because as the mayor has pointed out, we, we know, we have a schedule, we know when they are. I think most of us have always planned our vacations around that, um, but sometimes you just, things just happen, you can't do anything about it. And I don't think that should be one of your twenty percent of absences, because, um, you know, you've done all you can to be there.
Now, that's like circumstances beyond your control.
Right.
So, uh, that, that should be an exception to, to any excuse. If, if it's not valid normally, but if it comes up, something comes up, you know, beyond your control, say for instance, you were planning on flying home tonight, and for whatever reason the plane got grounded, you know, that's, that's not, certainly not your fault. So I mean, again, you, you have to be reasonable, but normally, like councillor Fox says, normally, a vacation wouldn't be considered a valid excuse unless you have extenuating circumstances or circumstances beyond your control. I mean, you know, you have to be reasonable for sure. So, anything else councillor Fox? Nope.
And you.
Councillor Septon, how is it?
I actually agree with councillor Fox in that there's no way, like, given the flights lately, every time you turn around, their flights have been canceled, or they've been moved, or they've been changed, or delayed. So it's way beyond a person's control when it comes to that. But there's also like, just little things, like for example, maybe somebody's already missed, you know, a couple, but what if somebody all of a sudden gives them a vacation and they don't know? They say, my daughter, for example, says, hey mom, by the way, just got a surprise, we're sending you two, and you have no idea, right? But it's, you're gonna miss a council meeting, so what do you do? Right, like, so there, I agree, I think we need to take these individually.
I do too. I do too. And my point is, if you're done.
Yeah.
All right, um, also, like you say, yes, we can schedule around our, you know, our vacation, we know when our meetings are, but then that's fine if you're going on vacation by yourself. But, you know, quite often you go with someone else, their schedule may not be the same as your schedule, maybe they, you know, they can't have that particular week off, I mean.
Somebody, somebody has to make a, an accommodation somewhere.
Well, that's right, and some people can't.
No, no.
Cause a lot of people, now, for example, I'm going away with, with my niece who's a nurse, and she booked her vacation in November and it's not changing. You know, it doesn't happen to be at a council meeting time, but, you know, it's the same, so they, and a lot of people are in the same boat, you know, you never really go independently by yourself very often, and so you may just not be able to. And the thing is, I under, to me, to go on vacation, like you say, everything's subjective, it's one thing for someone to, to miss a council meeting, go on vacation, but if you've had four vacations this year, well then, maybe it's a little more.
Yeah, I think we'd, uh, we'd have to give, like, if we allowed vacation as a valid excuse and we didn't allow a workplace commitment as a valid excuse, on, uh, history, then I think we're gonna look pretty silly.
Well, no, but, see, a workplace commitment, I, I also have no problem with that, as long as it's something that doesn't happen, but like you say, if all of a sudden everybody, you had to start working every Wednesday night, or in the case that we had earlier a few years ago, someone got a different job and we're traveling all the time. And missed, you know, almost every meeting.
Yeah.
That's, you know, then you've got to make a decision.
That's why it wouldn't, that's why it wouldn't be a valid excuse.
That's why it's not such a valid excuse, but when once in a while something happens and, you know, you either, you know, something more unusual comes up, you have to go to a fire, um, you know, or someone else has to go to a conference, or you've got, I mean, it, it, that's why, that's why I hate to see something written in stone. I mean, everything, there has to be a little discretion, you know, with, with everything.
Yeah. Yeah, but the, the motion wasn't everything, the motion was strictly vacation, so keep, keep your comments to the table.
No, we, we have this list here that we're, I know it's related, it's just.
Yeah, but no, no, that's, that was the list they put for information services, the actual motion on the floor is that vacation would not be considered a valid excuse, so we kind of have to stick to that motion. That's what we're discussing.
If we're making, all right, I'll be clear here, what we're voting on, are we voting on the principle that it's going to be, uh, vacation is not gonna be a valid excuse? Or we, or we're voting in this case, whether this particular vacation.
We're voting on the principle, usually your vacation would not be considered a valid excuse, but again, if somebody comes in like councillor Septon, his scheduled air flight is beyond his control, so I mean, you know, again.
Why, why are we voting in general on this one, for this particular time tonight?
Because there's something that came out that we need advice on.
I know, but it came up as a specific case.
Well, the specific case in his case, but vacation a valid excuse.
Well, we're, we're working on this, um, bylaw anyway.
Yeah.
So why would that not all be included with all the rest of the, when, when we do that bylaw, why are we voting?
Cause this request came up.
I know, that's what I'm saying, that we should be voting on this particular request tonight, and that's it, not the general principle of whether vacations are, you see what I'm saying?
Councillor Mackenzie brought a motion on the floor, so.
So then we shall defeat it.
Well, maybe it might be defeated, why not, so, I don't know.
I don't know. But no, I, I don't understand the purpose of the, of this particular motion at this particular time.
Well, it's to decide whether vacation is a valid excuse or not.
You're not getting my point.
So that we will have a, so that we procedural for the remuneration bylaw.
Yeah.
So whether we.
We have to make, because right now, the way it is in the bylaw, we have to make these changes, because we're bringing them forward to the March meeting.
I see that. Yes, right.
So it would be nice to know what you guys feel on this, so that we can make those changes for the remuneration bylaw, so that we can bring that forward to you in March.
Yeah, we either talk about it now or talk about it later.
But that's when we should go to March, not right now.
Well, I still have to direct, I just need to kind of know how, what you guys were thinking on that.
So you could just ask the question. Cause I mean, you need to ask the question on death in the family, employment commitments, I mean, there's a number of things that are gonna be in that bylaw in March. You need to know what everybody thinks on all of those things, as we had a meeting the other night about different, um, parts of different bylaws. So that's when, to me, you would deal with that, not tonight.
Well, like I said, you're, you're certainly entitled to your opinion, but, uh, have any more comments?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on to councillor Mackenzie.
So the reason I do have it on the floor tonight is because this, if we recall, this was actually carried over from the last council meeting, the regular meetings at council, we were gonna discuss it and leave a motion to postpone it to tonight. And the reason being that, um, I don't know what the circumstance is, but the missed flight or if that's what, what's going on tonight specifically, but what I understood, this was a request in advance of a vacation to see if we should be counting vacations in general, in principle, as a valid excuse or not. Because there's nothing really specific in the bylaw about it, and there was some discussion in the past, as the mayor had mentioned, that, you know, you really, you have, generally you have your schedule, you know when our council meetings are gonna be, at least the regular meetings. You really should be scheduling your vacation around that, and if you can't, for whatever reason, whether it be extending circumstances or not, like a once-in-a-lifetime vacation that comes up, you do have the allowance of missing the two meetings anyway. So that could be one of the two meetings that you miss. And if it's not, if something has come up in the past, you've already missed two meetings, that would be a perfect example of extenuating circumstances, where that specific situation, rather than the generality, should be taken into context. Is it okay for this person to miss this meeting, cause the, the flight got changed? Most, most people would think yes, because there's nothing they can do about it, right? The plan was to be back in time, but they, they couldn't because it was something beyond their control. But as far as vacations go, and this is why it's a bit of a sticking point would be, because if you think, for example, um, some of us work full-time in another, in an actual regular day job, and this is not our full-time primary job. But for people, not just this council, but in any council going forward, cause we're gonna just not think about right now, it's going forward, I know it can change, because you can change bylaws if you want. But, um, if you're on, for example, uh, retirement, really that's a permanent vacation, right? You don't, every, every council meeting is a vacation at that point, so what, like, where would that stop? So there has to be some kind of a, a, a line or guidance, draw, I think anyway, drawn for that, so we can say, okay, if you plan, you should be planning your vacations around your council meetings, because you have a commitment to that. You, you're in public service, you have a day job, but you also have a public service commitment, so you should be scheduling, like, I try to do this every year too, since twenty fourteen, I try to do all my vacations around so I won't miss something in council. If I get stuck in Florida or I get stuck in Arizona, then, then I'll have to ask council about that when I get back, there's nothing I can do about it. But generally, I try to have enough of a leeway to take, take things like that into account, because I try to plan, this is, this is a life commitment, I made a commitment to be part of council, so I schedule my vacations. Not a permanent vacation, cause I'm retired, but my, my daytime vacation, which is what's being considered here, as planned around not just my day job, but also my night job, I guess would be a way of saying. Because you have commitments and you have to be able, proper planning, and you should be able to plan your commitments out, just so that things are forecasted. So that's why I made this motion with it, and I, I do think that it's not just the specific situation, I didn't know, actually know about the specific situation. I was just planning on this because of the previous council meeting, when this came up for discussion, to say whether this should be taken into account in the future going forward. And that's why I put this motion on the floor tonight, and why I'll be voting support.
Thank you. Councillor.
I agree with councillor Fox.
Okay, great. And councillor Pat.
I believe we can all plan ahead for our vacations, and if they're extenuating circumstances, that's when, uh, an approach to council could be made for reconsidering on a case-by-case basis. So I did not consider vacations as a excuse to miss the council meetings.
Yeah, great. So, any other comments or questions while the floor is open?
Or if you're going to have extenuating circumstances, how are we gonna write that into your bylaw? Because, just because we sit here and think we're all reasonable people, we know that. we know that a lot of people are not reasonable, and going forward, you get a different council, a different people, it'll...
Yeah, I think we could add, in, into our bylaw, we could put in there, where, you know, a valid excuse to miss a council meeting is where a councillor has no control, it's beyond his, it's beyond his control, that would be a reasonable excuse to miss a council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those contrary-minded?
Nay.
And so we have two nays, and four against, the motion's carried. Thank you, counsel. Now, should we, where councillor, uh, Sefton has asked me for his vacation, and he, it was, it was a planned vacation, and he did plan his vacation around the council meeting, but his, uh, things changed, that he had, he had no control over, it was to do with his, uh, airline flights, so can I get a motion on the table that we, we would consider his excuse as a valid excuse or not?
I move to accept councillor Sefton's vacation request to miss the February 28th special meeting of council, and March 2023 regular meeting of council as a valid excuse.
I'll second it.